May 8th meeting, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a couple of quick items to deal with before we get to our student scholars here with their science projects. Let's see, Spanish translation.
Si, buenas tardes y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias.
One liability claim, Claimant Lynch, motion by Laura Malikoff to deny the claim, seconded by Kate Parker, the vote was four zero. Liability claim, Claimant Grimm, motion by Ms. Malikoff, second by Ms. Parker to deny the claim, the vote was four zero, and Dr. Noel is absent this evening. The California High School exit exam waivers for graduation for students with disabilities, the waivers were granted, motion by Ms. Malikoff, second by Ms. Cordero, and the vote was four Acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with gratitude.
A very long list. Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion by Ms. Cordero, second by Ms. Malikoff. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we are on to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
Well, we've set these up so that the cabinet members could hide behind them and do work tonight. This is a special night. The 52nd Annual Santa Barbara County Science Fair took place on April 20. The fair was open to all Santa Barbara County students in grades seven through 12. This year, there were 133 registered projects done by 153 registered participants. The students came from 11 schools, and I am pleased to report that of the six junior level project divisions, all six best in division categories went to students in our district. Of the two senior level project divisions, one best of division award went to two San Marcos High School students, and I'll be announcing them in just a moment. I'm delighted to ask the following students, who each won best in division, and their respective teacher, to step forward. Junior Biological Division went to Dana Walker, La Colina Junior High School, for distribution of Western snowy plover food at Sands Beach Galita. Dana's science teacher is Danielle Bean. Danielle? Great, I love that. Just stand right behind your student there. How's that? Junior Behavioral Division went to Megah Monjunath. Megah? Did I get it right? Megah Monjunath, Galita Valley Junior High, for stereo vision, do we really need to recognize images to perceive depth? Megah's science teacher is Brad Pincala. Brad? Oh, Mr. Pincala isn't with us tonight. We'll catch him later. Junior Environmental Division went to Mallory Meyer, Galita Valley Junior High, for the golden ratio and aminoids. Mallory's science teacher is Kim Miller. Junior Microbiological Division went to Zoe Brier, Santa Barbara Junior High, on how bacteria can be reduced on a sponge. This is an important one, everyone out of... Zoe's science teacher is Marilyn Garza. Junior Physical Science Division went to Johnny Monzo, La Colina Junior High, for wave hello to clean energy. Johnny's science teacher is David Marchetti. Johnny's project won the best in division and best in fair in the junior division. And Junior Mechanical Division went to Connor Lynch, Galita Valley Junior High, for hydrogen clean and powerful. Connor's science teacher is Kim Miller. Oh, she's already here. And in the Senior Life Science Division, Andrew Sanchez and Esther Flores from San Marcos High, won best in division and best in fair, for how does the amount of...
Encanthrosiphalon.
Encanthrosiphalon. Those are the, of course, those are those thorny headworms. Parasites affect swimming and burrowing. Andrew and Esther's science teacher is Olin Bosbach. Mr. Bosbach, this is almost 20 years of winners for you, and they're reflected in your 95% passing AP high school chemistry scores as well. Well, students, congratulations to each of you for your hard work. We join your families in celebrating your success, and thank you, teachers, for your commitment to academic excellence. Students, I understand you're all going to state-level finals. And students, we know that your success reflects the encouragement that you receive at home, and we join you in applauding your parents. And board members will note, we have a number of administrators in the room as well, supporting their teachers and students. Ms. Harder?
No, I just want to thank everyone for coming to honor these students and their terrific accomplishments, and I want to tell the students that if you tune in at about 5:15 on Saturday afternoon on Channel 18, you should be able to see yourself, assuming we, I think we got everybody on camera. So, the moment will be preserved for posterity, and we really appreciate you being here and sharing with us your experiments. You gave great explanations, it was wonderful to talk with all of you.
It's homework time.
You didn't feel obliged to stay. Absolutely, grab your display boards.
It's probably easier to take them now than later.
They're so interesting.
And don't dent those corners, so they'll be in good shape for state. I think we have a student report tonight from Jackie Zupsek.
We do have Jackie Zupsek with us. Jackie? Here, I'm holding the mic here, so, there we go, thank you. So I can pass it off to you.
There's a door right there.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Jackie Zupsek, and I go to Santa Barbara High School. Next year, I'm going to be the ASD president. I'm filling in for Kelsey Farish. At Santa Barbara High School, tons of new things have been going on lately. We've recently had a WASC visit, which went very well, and we had lots of positive feedback from the committee. In addition, STAR testing just came to an end, and AP testing is just gearing up. This year, a huge number of students are taking these AP tests in our newly renovated library, which just opened last week. It's really pretty. Our spring musical, The Pajama Game, also just opened last week, and will continue to show this week, Wednesday through Saturday, 7:00 PM, in our theater. Also coming up, on May 26th, is our senior prom. The theme this year is going to be 007, in honor of the graduating class of 2007. And that is our report from Santa Barbara High School. Are there any questions for me?
No, but thank you very much for bringing us news. And you should not feel obliged to stay, Jackie. Superintendent's report.
Well, we will schedule an event at the Santa Barbara High School. It looks just great. Let's see, I do have a number of items to report on tonight. Let me start with our business from last week. I read a number of news reports on the board's rejection of the American Charter High School. I think the community needs to know that the board denied the petition because the charter petition presented an unsound educational program, was unlikely to successfully implement the program, did not contain the required number of signatures, only one of the three potential teachers had a valid credential, and did not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the required elements or an affirmation of the required conditions. Other items. On Friday, we learned that McKinley Elementary School will receive $194,000 in Quality Educational Investment Act funds in 2007-08. As you recall, when the application was brought to the board, the funds are targeted for schools in either deciles one or two, as determined by the 2005 API base. The monies will be used to boost student achievement through class-size reduction in the upper grades, those would be middle grades in an elementary school, four, five, six, and comprehensive professional development for teachers. We are very hopeful that these funds will result in much higher student achievement, which will enable McKinley to access QEIA additional funds for the next seven years. Seven years? I thought it was only five. Wow, thank you. STAR testing is soon to be completed. Actually, elementary district testing is done. Seventh graders are taking... Oh, well, or they just started, but they're soon to be completed. We'll find out. Seventh graders are taking math and English STAR tests, and eighth graders are taking English, math, science, and social science STAR tests. High school testing is just about finished. Do you think I'm right? And the tests are important because they help us assess the delivery of our educational programs. In the chapter Competition of Math Counts, the Galita Valley Junior High eight-member team placed second out of 20 schools. They moved on to state level on competition and placed 11th out of the top 33 schools in Southern California. Congratulations, Galita Valley. Jose Marquez was honored recently as an exceptional teacher by Santa Barbara Rotary. Jose is a social science and avid teacher at La Colina Junior High. Summer school is not too far off. I know, we'll go to graduation first, but... Summer school will run from June 20 through July 31 in the high school district. This year, the summer school sites will be Galita Valley, La Colina, Santa Barbara, and La Cumbre Junior High Schools, Community Day School, Santa Barbara High School, both Dos Pueblos and San Marcos summer schools will be held at Dos Pueblos High School this summer. Registration is underway for the 2007-08 Child Development Program's Free University Preschool. The university? No, it says university. Thank you. Yes, it is, the Free Universal Preschool.
But it increases your chances of making it to the university.
That's right. I think they start with an SAT prep, first thing in the morning, then they go on. The program serves three-and-a-half to four-year-old children and is open to families living within the attendance boundaries of the Santa Barbara Elementary School districts and to employees of the elementary and secondary districts. Our students, staff, and parents have been receiving presentations by Richard Ramos, and one reason I want to comment on this is that I am so proud of our teachers, who do what teachers do best. They carry the anti-gang theme back into the classroom, following Richard Ramos's presentations. Some teachers have encouraged student dialogue, or have had students reflect and write about how ruinous gang activities can be and what their lone lives can become. Author and gang resource, Richard Ramos, will meet with students again on Friday, May 11. This time, he will be at Santa Barbara High School, Galita Valley Junior High, and San Marcos High. His message will reach about 2,600 students. Richard will be available to secondary staff that afternoon and English-speaking parents in the evening. This is the third and his fourth of his four-part schedule. On May 24, he will visit Roosevelt, Harding, and McKinley, and will conclude the series of presentations. Upcoming events. Looking ahead, there are quite a number of events we can look forward to in May. How is this for a list? San Marcos High, we've reported on the WIZ. Well, it's still on. It's running tomorrow and runs through May 11. There will be a talent show at Galita Valley Junior High on May 17. La Colina Junior High's band concert will take place, May 17. And La Cumbre Junior High's Spring Music Festival will take place on May 17. It's going to be a busy night for all of us. Santa Barbara Junior High's Renaissance Fair will take place the following day, May 18, and Mayor Marty Bloom will again be the queen of the fair. Galita Valley Junior High's advanced band will perform at Disneyland on May 19. Santa Barbara Junior High School's Civil War Day will be held on May 23. Santa Barbara Junior High's talent show will be on May 24. La Colina's choir concert will be on May 24, and Crystal Apple Awards will be presented to teachers in Santa Barbara County at the Santa Inez Valley Marriott in Buellton on May 24. Reservations are due by May 11, if you're planning to attend. And that's it tonight for the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Dr. Sarvis. I believe we have a few public comments. The parameters of public comment are three minutes with a 30-second warning given by Ms. Malikoff.
Okay, the first is together, I guess, Gabe Cano and Glenn Hodges. Did you want to come up together?
Hi, I'm Gabe Cano, and this is my business partner Glenn Hodges, and together we're the owners of Your Custom Photo Lab, Specialty Color Services. For the entire month of May, we will be doing our annual fundraiser, where we donate 50% of one product to Santa Barbara school districts. And this year, we decided to choose Front Web Express, which is one of our online methods of ordering prints, because quick and easy, and it's just a very user-friendly way of ordering prints. So, we're just basically encouraging everybody to do this and participate, so that way we can generate some funds for this.
Thank you, we appreciate it. And this is your fourth year in a row doing this fundraiser, yes?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. So, we brought along this, I know it's a sticky situation, I'm not sure if we're allowed to distribute this, but if we are, I'd love it if we could just leave it out there. I know it's...
You can distribute it to us, we just can't distribute it to students or parents.
Well, that's just fine with us. Yeah, we appreciate that.
Okay.
We'll be happy to take it, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate this. I wish more businesses would follow your lead.
That's kind of what we're hoping. We're hoping this will start a chino, that'll encourage other businesses to step up to the plate as well. You know, it's a challenging time for the schools, and anything, every bit helps.
That would be delightful. So, a challenge to the business community.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laura Baker, followed by Michael Cheng.
Thank you, good evening. My name's Laura Baker, and I'm a teacher at La Cumbre Junior High School. Obviously, I am vehemently opposed to the proposed move of the elementary program to the junior high campus. On August 29, 2006, I vowed to be here at every regularly scheduled board meeting until this vote was taken on this issue. I've done this not to be a thorn in your side, and not to simply be an irritant. I have done this because I believe in the oath that I took 16 years ago, when I began teaching in this district. The oath was my promise to be an advocate, a voice for the students in my charge. I took this quite seriously and feel the responsibility to speak out when needed. I represent the interests of the Westside community. I would like to remind everyone here that all personnel in the district have this same responsibility, from the top down. Your decisions make a big difference in the futures of each student in this area, not just a select few. You've heard my arguments against this proposal, you've heard the arguments from parents, students, neighbors, and other staff. I'm dumbfounded that you can listen to these points and still make up your mind before all the information is in. I shake my head daily in disbelief. I just don't think there's anything that will get through at this point, honestly. I'm feeling a little defeated here. It is obvious that we can't change our minds at this point. So, I just want to have my say here. So, on a different note, I'd like to sing the praises of La Cumbre for a moment. La Cumbre was the only school in the area to apply for and receive the After School ACE's grant, $135,000 in funding this school year. And I think it goes on for three years, I'm not sure how long. This program offers after-school activities that extend the academic program, activities of interest that the students are telling us what they're interested in, and we're making it work for them, and enrichment opportunities. 100 students a day, five days a week, are actively engaged until 6:00 PM every day. This is just one example of how La Cumbre is moving forward and making changes. This is just one example of why La Cumbre continues to be on track for further growth next year, in an era of declining enrollment. Joanne Cain's parents and my esteemed colleagues should be commended for this turnaround and rebirth. This is one more reason you must take Pat Salie's interim option of status quo for one more year seriously. At this late date in the school year, with a very short time between now and July, when the academy begins, you honestly have no other reasonable option but status quo. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Baker.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Sarvis, and members of the school administrators. I hope I could deliver a different tone and different message today and this time. My name is Michael Cheng, and I've been in the community for 32 years. My children graduated from the local school, they all accomplished students and individuals, one from Harvard and one from UNC at North Carolina Chapel Hill. I twisted my ankle last week, but my wife told me, hey, you have to be here tonight, I want you to. Okay, I said, okay, fine. And she wanted me to deliver a message of thanks and appreciation. Why am I thanking the board? Why am I appreciating the work being done by the board? And this is what I am going to tell you. According to the paper on News Press on Tuesday, May 1, it was printed, "Local Students to be Offered Mandarin Chinese." Starting in the fall, Santa Barbara School District will be offering students in grades seven and nine courses in Mandarin Chinese, in addition to learning about the cultural aspects, and students will receive the both oral and written instructions in the language. I cannot see or fathom, or even expect to hear, to read, an occasion of this nature, where the board and the administrators have such a far-sighted vision and goal, to elevate our students, to broaden their cultural enrichment, and knowing that, hey, apart from the United States, there's another world called the East, Middle East, and Far East. With this global economy, global contact, and the world is getting narrower and getting closer to each other, I think this is the only right way to do. And I just wanted to be here, even though my ankle is painful as heck, but I cannot help to control my joy and gibberish inside of me, to utter a word, thank you, board members. I appreciate your hard work, I appreciate your vision, and most of all, I'm so proud to be part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheng.
Thank you. Nicole McKee, I believe you want to speak under E4, is that correct? Or do you want to speak? It depends on what exactly you're going to want to speak about, but... That makes sense? Okay. And David Holmes, you wanted to speak under E1. I don't... Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Our consent agenda.
We're pulling the minutes, D1, from February 13. There are a number of errors that have been...
Identified?
Identified, yes.
Okay, so we are approving just one set of minutes as part of this agenda. Any other items?
The ones that, the minutes that are held, then, is the December, the February 20th, which I can't vote on, and you can't vote on. Correct? You're absent. It's this one.
Maybe we should just pull them both.
Yeah. I have to look. So if you're not present, you can't vote on the minutes? Is that the way it works? It's the February 20th one. Oh, I'm looking at 13th. Okay, well, we'll hold both sets of minutes over. So, any other items? Or is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, except for item D1, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made that motion?
Ms. Cordero and Ms. Parker. I'm sorry. So it passes four zero. Then, we are on to item E1, the Third Reading of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation, 6142.7, Physical Education.
And Jan Zettel, our Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education, will make the presentation.
Thank you, President Harder. It's with great joy that I come before you with the third now reading of the Physical Education section of the Wellness Policy, a policy that has well past its time for passage, and I'm a little embarrassed about that, but, you know, we've worked very hard on this. It's not been easy to take into account the voices, the many voices of the educational community out there. We came together several times, and you heard some of those voices speak at the last board meeting, where we had a reading of the policy. At issue were some items that were, items that came from CDE as items of information. Craig Price, our legal counsel, also gave some good advice in this, and we also heard the advice and recognized the needs of our band, our theater arts, and cheerleading and drill team teachers, as elective teachers. And so, coming from all of that, with the express interest of not harming those elective programs, or trying the best we could not to harm them, while also complying with issues that were compliance issues with physical education and ed code and law, we've come to yet a third iteration, that I hope will stand this policy in good stead, and do the kinds of things that we hoped it would do. And that is not to harm our elective programs, but to support children in health and physical activity in our schools, which is a critical thing to do right now. And so, you have to listen carefully to this one now. I'd like to read the key part of the policy, that is a change. Student participation in other courses that teach physical edu- Student participation in other courses that teach physical education standards, interscholastic sports, marching band, theater arts/dance, drill, flag team, or cheerleading may be substituted for meeting the full physical education requirement. Students shall be required to take 10 units of PE in the ninth grade and may be granted up to one semester of alternate credit per year for PE during grades 9 through 12 for marching band, theater arts, dance, drill team, flag, or cheerleading to equal 20 units of PE fulfilling the graduation requirement. Alternate-credit PE course instructors are expected to collaborate with credentialed PE teachers to ensure students receive instruction meeting California state standards in physical education. Students also must demonstrate a passing score on the California fitness test taken in the ninth grade to gain a waiver for up to two years of PE in grades 10 through 12. Now, there are many more pieces of the law and of ed code, reasons to grant the waivers. There are no changes in those, in those pieces. This was language that was crafted to help support marching band and with the express intent of having a good collaboration between physical education instructors and marching band instructors so that we could meet the requirements of CPM. And this is where we're at. Questions?
Yeah, Ms. Malka.
Can I summarize that kind of for the, maybe, and tell me if I'm right? Is that for someone who wants, is interested in marching band, they, what they, this changes that would need to happen would they, would be that they would have to take one semester of PE, that's the second semester of their ninth grade year?
Correct.
And that, and if they took marching band or cheerleaders or whatever, the first semester or three semesters at any point, then they would be satisfying their PE requirement?
Yes. There's an interesting piece of the law which grants the superintendent the right to waive two years of physical education in grades 10 through 12, which on the backside means that students have to take PE in ninth grade. And while it's not expressly given in, in those terms to allow alternate credit, there's nothing in the law currently that says that we can't do that. And so to give credit for marching band for semester and to have students take PE in the second semester of their ninth grade, there are actually two slots open for electives in that year. And they can get that out of the way at that point and take the California fitness test. So that's a good way to prepare for that test also.
But that's the additional piece, that in order to get the alternative credit 10 through, 10th grade through 12th grade, they have to pass the physical fitness exam in ninth grade?
That's exactly right. I went back to the ed code and read the law. I thought it was going to pass in, on January 1st of '08. It passed in July of '07. Or it will pass in July of '07, excuse me. And it is in code right now as such. But I don't know what a passing score is. I'm not quite certain. I've looked all over.
I spent some time researching that one. The state doesn't know yet.
Thank you.
I have a...
Glad to hear that.
Couple more questions if I could. On the, well, let's go, continuing on this little part that we just read, the interscholastic sports, that stays pretty much as is, because I don't see that in the second half of the sentence here. So that means that a student who takes the two years, ninth and 10th grade in a interscholastic sport, they satisfy their credit?
They actually can waive their PE, regular PE class for the season of sport if they're in an interscholastic sport. And that's actually given in ed code as, as a waiver.
Do they still need to take the PE test?
Yes.
And so that will be done by the, because they're not, I don't think doing that currently, but they will be doing that?
Yes.
Good, okay. My other question is on the second page of the, the policy. And, you know, this is about the automobile driver training, which we don't provide during PE. And can we just take that line out there, out of there?
You certainly can. It is in ed code, but it's a code that doesn't really apply to us as a district. We no longer give driver training. We have driver education, but not driver training in the car.
Oh, is that what that's referring to, is just the driver part? Okay. Okay, so since we don't do that, we really should take it out.
Okay. Glad to do that.
Well, I'm sorry, I just have a question really quickly regarding that. If a student took, privately took driver's training, would they qualify for this? Or does it have to be offered through the school?
I had the sense that it should be through the school. It doesn't say that it has to be through the school. So I don't know that this one has been tested. 24 clock hours would be 24 days of PE missed. That seems like an awful lot.
I guess I have to question whether sitting behind the wheel of a car should substitute for physical education. So I would be, I would be more comfortable eliminating Section 3.
Well, my only concern there is that if it's ed code and if ed code means that driver's training, whether it's through the school or not through the school, I mean, maybe we should leave it and leave it ambiguous because it's ambiguous in ed code and if people want to...
Then what you're suggesting is a change in policies so that people who take private driver training, which is what occurs now, if you want to get your driver's license when you turn 16, then they can apply for credit for PE?
Well, even if we remove this from our board policy, because it's an ed code, they could probably still apply for credit, couldn't they? If it's an ed code? Doesn't that take precedence over board policy?
Well, my, my sense of this was that it was passed at a time when students couldn't get everything in and they went out to do the driving portion, then instead of going to PE class, they could go out at 10 o'clock and do that driving. 24 hours is a bit much as compared to the... It will still be in ed code. We don't use this. I've checked. We don't use it. My recommendation would be to take it out of our policy. The ed code is still this tall, which is, which is about 10 inches taller than, than our board policies. So we can leave it in ed code, but I don't really see a need for it here.
Any other questions? I think we have one public comment. More questions, Ms. Cordero, yeah?
Yeah, I just had a very quick question on the introductory paragraph that Mr. Zettel read. Given our past discussion about the, I thought the reason why we initially were restricting the alternatives to PE was because of the, the new requirement that PE, any class that satisfied a PE requirement had to include all these various aspects of instruction. And most of the alternatives didn't include all of those things. And so where it says, "Alternative PE courses, course instructors are expected to collaborate with credentialed PE instructors", I was wondering why we use the word "are expected to" rather than "are required to"?
I think we could use "are required to" actually. Because if we're giving credit, we need to give credit in the standards that are being taught. And PE instructors need to know from the alternate course credit in PE what is being taught so that they can adjust their instruction. So I would be glad to put "required" in if that's to the will of the board.
I, I feel like it's more in keeping with what was, what the change was.
Much stronger language and that may go over better at the state level.
Well, I'll leave that up to the maker of the motion. If, is, are there any other questions?
I do actually have one.
Okay.
Quick question in that the first time that this, or not the first time, but the last time it came to us, with the new electives that we're going to need to offer, there was a cost to that of $135,000. This is now saying no cost, so I just want to clarify that.
Well, to satisfy the requirement of the categorical program monitoring, which was that we offer at each of our high schools at least three elective PE courses because we are giving the choice to students to waive two years. Therefore, we need to offer elective PE courses that are available. It, it was my judgment and after I took it to the cabinet and we talked about it, we all felt that it was the offering of the course that was, that was critical. It doesn't have to, if it doesn't fill, it doesn't have to be placed on the master schedule. We certainly can't afford the additional $135,000 for the additional sections to, to do that. Not in, in this time when we're laying off teachers. It just couldn't be done. And so I think we're going to let the marketplace decide for itself in terms of what students wish to sign up for in the elective program. So they'll be offered as... Okay.
Can students substitute, I'm sorry, can students substitute a PE class at City College for one of these electives?
Yes.
We have a couple of public speakers.
We have David Holmes, followed by Monica Peterson.
I wore this Wiz shirt the last time I was here. I subscribe to the idea of wearing your show shirts until they're crunchy, and this is just about crunchy.
I was, I was willing to assume that you had taken off and washed it, Mr. Holmes. But good PR.
Listen, all right, I feel like sometimes I'm the lone voice here. I appreciate the fact that, that the committee went back and reworked this and tried to soften the effects, the negative effects this will have on the electives. But there will still be a negative effect on the electives if you pass this wellness policy as it is written. There's also nothing in the law that says you can't grant a ninth grader PE credit for these alternate, alternate classes like marching band and the musical and all of that. Ninth grade is critical for the electives programs. Ninth grade, they have a lot of freedom, a lot of chances to take courses that they've never, never taken before. Without, with any, any additional electives added to the mix is going to diminish the number of students available for the, the traditional electives. The loss of, the curriculum council is also a loss of checks and balances. Here you have a, a perfect example of adding a requirement, and all ninth graders will take PE, a standard straight PE class, is an added requirement. Without a curriculum council, those kind of things are going to be coming up in the future. I wanted to throw that in there. Adding PE electives without increasing FTEs means that the FTEs, the teachers come out of the elective pool. The principals are going to be saddled with some really tough choices. They're going to feel like they're being mandated to offer PE classes and they're going to have to cut somewhere. You know, it's a, it's a game that's played. If you, if you, if you mandate PE in grade nine and then you add three electives at each of the high schools and you don't add any FTEs to help cover it, well, who's going to pay for it? It's the electives. Under-enrolled electives will be, be taken out of the mix that didn't need to be under-enrolled without, without these new, these changes. So my point of being here...
30 seconds.
In, with declining enrollment and also faced with, you know, two-thirds cuts in electives in seventh and eighth grade, that, that you do not approve this wellness policy as it's written without some adjustments that allow for ninth graders to have full access to these alternate PE credit classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Peterson.
Thank you, school board members. I'm Monica Peterson and I would like to recommend that you make few or no changes to your current policy of awarding credit to alternative classes that teach physical education. Your legal counsel has told you that legally there is no reason to make any changes. Making no changes would be in the best interest of our students. Performing arts classes like marching band provide strenuous physical activity and education. They should not be singled out for exclusion of PE credit. Why haven't classes like interscholastic sports and independent study PE that specialize in one content area received the same scrutiny? It seems reasonable that all of these classes should be held to the same standard. If collaborating with a credentialed PE instructor is to be required of performing arts, it should also be required of interscholastic sports and independent study PE. Changes to current policy can only constrain our students. There is no possibility of improving classes like music. Only the promise of reduced enrollment with fewer students enjoying the benefits of performing arts classes. Please do not fetter our students by limiting alternate PE credit to one semester per year. This requirement is particularly confining at San Marcos where the double-length class periods are specifically designed to work with classes that are two semesters long. For example, one semester of PE might be completed between January 20th and March 23rd if a student is required to take a semester of traditional PE. Also, at San Marcos, marching band students receive one year of PE credit currently. They have class from September to January, which is one year of PE credit. You would be reducing that. I would like to know if the Physical Education Task Force has worked with anyone from the counseling office to resolve these scheduling problems that will arise. Financially, I disagree that this proposed change will have no fiscal impact. Since the elective classes that will be lost, will be losing students, are large group activities like band, additional teachers will have to be hired to teach PE. As we are all agonizingly aware, our schools cannot afford to spend this additional money. The proposal to eliminate alternate PE credit is hugely unpopular. It also comes at a time when the Santa Barbara community is looking to engage its youth in group activities that are personally meaningful and rewarding. It is important for teens to feel that sense of belonging that performing arts classes give them. As a, as a school board, you have had to make some very difficult financial decisions. The elementary schools painfully had a music teacher eliminated. The junior high schools have reduced elective classes, including music. Tonight's decision should be easy. Preserve PE credit for the performing arts and save money. To quote our music teacher, "You must not put the final nail in the coffin of performing arts." Please don't deny them PE credit. Thank you.
Could I ask another question, Mr. Zettel? It is more straightforward, it seems to me, at the San Barbara High and at Dos Publos. At San Marcos, where there aren't the semesters in the same way and PE, are there classes even for, that are half a, half a, half a semester?
I'd like to remind the board that the issues with physical education arose from the categorical program monitoring that came from San Marcos High School. Because in the code, 400 minutes every 10 days is required. That's for the year. They only have, they have a year-long PE class that goes two terms, not the full year. So they're having to work with that issue to correct that problem. And there are multiple ways to do it. Number one, there could be a waiver through the state board that they're looking at. Yes. Number two, they could do, they could do two years of PE in one year, possibly taking care of the whole PE requirement at ninth grade level. So it's an issue and it's an issue that comes up in, in that block schedule. And I don't have any good answers for that.
At the moment, do they have?
Compliance.
Do they have, at the moment, do they have half a semester PE classes? But it counts as a, it counts as a...
One term counts as a semester. Yes. Which is a quarter, which is a semester.
Just one question of clarification. Has a waiver already been filed?
Not yet.
Oh, okay. Was there a plan, a request to file a waiver?
I believe that the principal of San Marcos was working with Diane Wilson-Grimm on doing that and getting advice from her. Also, Mr. Gonzalez and myself were available for help with that, and we've heard nothing more.
Don't waivers need to come through the board before they go on?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's a possibility we could see a waiver in the future.
But in the meantime...
That's what I was going to say. In the meantime, we're obligated to adhere to the state requirement that's in place now, are we not? Or are we allowed to some...
Well, unless you'd like to... Well, unless you'd like to have the onus of losing categorical funding-
No.
-we don't want to do that, no. So we need to comply with the ed code on that.
Okay, is there a motion for the discussion?
Well, my concern is if we put something in place right now, what are we doing for San Marcos? Basically, we're saying that marching band for one term and one term of PE there. That's what, that's what this is implying?
At the very least.
Yeah, as I, what I understood you to just say is that one term even does not meet the, the number of minutes that this ed code requires.
Without a waiver, it does not.
But it would meet our, any board policy that we created for now.
Correct.
Okay, so what's happening to bring us into compliance with the ed code? Is that what you, you said they're working on it?
Well, that's what San Marcos needs to be working on right now.
Okay.
Motion?
Okay, I move to approve Board Policy 6142.7 and its associated AR 6142.7 minus number three on the second page of the board policy.
No, that's okay.
Student in grades 10 through 12, and making the change to the administrative regulation that was suggested by Mrs. Cordero of switching, where is it over there? That's, but it's also in the, it's from the AR, though. So where it switches from expected to required in that paragraph.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it was a motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Cordero, and a vote of 4-0.
It was seconded by Ms. Malikoff.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. And a vote of 4-0, okay. Thank you. Okay, now we have a time certain item. Mr. Hettjung.
And it's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock. Public hearing and adoption of resolution 0607-32, authorization to convey easement, Galita Water District at Dos Pueblos High School.
Thank you, President Harder. Per Education Code 17557, at the last board meeting, the board adopted a resolution of intent to convey the meeting. That resolution set the hearing time at eight o'clock tonight. Also, per Education Code, three copies of the resolution were posted, one at Dos Pueblos High School, one at the Galita Water District offices, and one here at the district office. In addition, per Education Code, a notice was published in the news press not less than five days before today's date. So I would ask that President Harder that you open the hearing, that you ask for any public comment, and if there are no public comment and no one submits a petition protesting with at least 10% of the qualified electors signing that petition, that you close the hearing and adopt the resolution authorizing Dr. Sarvis to convey the easement.
Then I will officially open the hearing. I have no sheets for public comment and no correspondence indicating any kind of objection. So, Dr. Sarvis, we will officially close the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, any questions for Mr. Hettjung? We had a pretty complete explanation last time, and I really appreciate the fact that it's going to create two access points for the water lines, the sewer lines?
Correct, for the water line.
Okay.
And that way, if they work on one, the school can still get water from another in case there's an emergency or a breakage.
Right.
I wish we had that at all our school sites.
Okay. Is there a motion by board, a board member to adopt the resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution 0607-32, authorization to convey easement, Galita Water District at Dos Pueblos High School.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Malikoff. All those in favor of approving, of adopting the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So it passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hettjung. Now we are on to item E3, adoption of the second interim budget report for 0607.
I'd like Mr. Diaz to introduce this.
Mr. Bob Wolf will present the second interim budget report.
Good evening. This is, this is the final report based on the information. There have been some changes from the draft that you saw originally, and that's what we're highlighting tonight. We do have, we originally did the, I'm sorry, this shows the difference in just the P2ADA. We do have the final report now available, and you can see that our ADA is down about 374 for purposes of this year. That will carry us, that 13,962 will be what we have next year for, for funding purposes. And then our estimate is going to be another down, another 418 for the out year of 2008, 2009. The changes that were from the draft report, obviously, we have the P2 report now, so that's a change. We were a little bit high on our estimate there. We were low on our estimate for the supplemental hours, which are the hourly programs, core, retained students, some of the other hourly programs. The charter school ADA is up about 50. And so those changes have all been made in this particular report. With the associated change in the ADA for the out years, there's an associated change in the revenue. So the revenues decreased. We decreased the expenditures a little bit in the 5,000 series, and our ending fund balances have changed slightly, well, more slightly than more. And that's about all. And so it's recommended that you approve the report.
I'm sure board members have questions. I have a couple. Okay. My question has to do with ADA. And, you know, obviously, you know, I wish there were better predictors so that when we get to, you know, P1 and P2, we have, you know, come closer to hitting the bullseye on the target. And I realize there are so many variables involved. But because attendance is one of the few things that we can try to exert some control over, I mean, I would- I would love to hear from principals. I know elementary principals have tried, been trying to work on attendance issues. I would really like a report on attendance as we get to the end of the year. We've already passed P2. I would love to see what's going on. The other piece that we have some limited amount of control over is utilities. And I know that you've projected a 5% increase, which, you know, obviously, we, we need to be doing that, but is there any way that we can exert control over utilities by creating some kind of effort at school sites? Would be really nice to get that down to 3% as opposed to 5%. I mean, I, I'm beyond being able to, you know, find, you know, we went through all of these reductions. I guess I would like to try and find ways to create some savings and also to come closer to that ADA target. Other questions are-
Let me address attendance first.
We do have attendance goals. We have attendance goals site by site. Excuse me, and we expect a report on them to show you how student attendance is site by site. We will bring you that. In terms of controlling utilities costs, Mr. Diaz, I'll let you address that one.
You know, I've been involved in a variety of measures at both elementary and secondary schools with regards to your concern, President Harder. And about the only thing that has proved effective in the public school system is a contract out to a private firms, that there are several in the state. And for lack of a better term, they're, they're behavior modification individuals that will come in and actually train people to turn their computers off, train people to turn the lights off. They actually hire a person on district staff to work on the weekends, to work on the evenings. They patrol the schools to find, to find the computers that are on, to find the rooms that are still let, the gymnasiums that are let. And then they follow up on that with training, not necessarily have any heavy-handed techniques. But, but again, it's, it boils down to behavior modification. There are significant savings there. On the other hand, there's associated costs with bringing a person in. What do you do with them? Is it a limited-term assignment? How long do you keep them on staff? That is probably the most effective way to take a big bite out of your utility costs. We're currently doing a smaller version with our telecommunications, which we're doing in-house. We have a company, again, that's evaluating all the different telecommunications devices, the phone lines, the fax lines. And just today, I got a preliminary report from Brian Tangway, who's, who's heading that project up. And they've already identified 150 phones that we're paying for every month that are not even being used in the district. So it's this kind of stuff that we're getting our arms around, and, and we're going to be able to, to, this has been going on now a couple, three months. So we're just now seeing the results of this. We'll identify those lines, we'll stop those phones, we'll kill all the dead fax lines and phone lines. As our schools have emerged over the past who knows how many years, people will move from a classroom and a machine, lines and a data drop. Well, as things go by, they move back to other areas or move to other schools. You have those lines. District's paying 12 bucks a month for them, because nobody thinks, well, we'll call the phone company and tell them to stop using lines. So to the extent we are doing something with our telecommunications, I look for some savings, but not six-figure dollars there. But if, if the board would like to direct me to bring you some proposals for energy behavior modification, if you will, I don't like to call it that, let's call it energy conservation management, then I can certainly contact some firms, and Mr. Hettjung and I can review those and bring you, bring you something, just to give you a better idea or prepare-
I'd be curious to at least see it in a board brief. I don't know how other board members feel. At least see it in a board brief, and then individual board members can decide whether or not they think it's, it's worth bringing to an actual-
In fact, I'd like to, Dave, you've talked to some of those people, have you not? Some of those utility companies?
I've, I've done that when I was with the previous district. I have not done that with this district. But just like the article in the paper, Sunday paper, a few weeks back about the amount of electricity that's used just by leaving your computer on and, and your cellphone charger plugged in and things like that, it's, it's a great amount of power.
Sort of, I, I'm sorry, I sort of got carried away with this utilities discussion.
I'll get a board brief item to you on that.
Other board questions about the second interim?
Actually, I just wanted to quickly follow up on that because I did have a question, and it ties in directly to that. I'm really happy to hear you mention the identification of utilities that we're overpaying on because several, well, at least a few months ago, I had met with Dr. Sarvis, and I think Dr. Sarvis directed this, maybe to your office, Mr. Diaz, about a company that actually comes into districts and reviews their use of, well, really, just about everything, but primarily utilities. And they do often find six-figure savings for districts. And I was just wondering if we had followed up with that and if we're, what, whatever came of that?
Yes, they're auditing our bills currently. They're auditing our, our different utility bills right now.
Great.
So we did start with them. We're just getting some preliminary numbers from the telecommunications portion of it. But we did follow the superintendent's direction and engage a company to do that, so.
Great, I'm glad to hear that.
Within the next 60 days, I would hope.
Mr. Hettjung?
Yes, we also have Southern California Edison looking at a few of our schools doing energy audits. In fact, we're getting ready to do one at Harding Elementary.
Other comments, yeah, Ms. Parker?
So what I'm seeing on this draft report is a change, just looking at 0708, of having almost $835,000 less than was on the draft report. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
So does that mean that as we reopen and start looking at the 0708 budget within the next few weeks, that we're going to need to cut another $835,000 from that?
We will have to wait to see what the personnel situation and the staffing is and before I can make that affirmative answer. You've made a number of rifts, you've approved rifts tonight that, that aren't- Because you've just now approved them or in any of those documents. And so as we move forward and as personnel start staffing for next year and we start doing the budget, we'll be looking more carefully so that 830,000, yeah, $830,000 in loss of the ending fund balance may turn around just due to this loss of staffing.
Other questions?
I just have one other thing that's, it's on the, it's sort of on the memo that came with this, on the reverse, when it talks about the possible cash flow challenge between the, and I know that this will come to us as a separate item, but I do want, when that comes to us, for us to be thinking about, is this, is this something that we need to look at legislation that we should be supporting at the state level so that there is not this kind of a timing problem in terms of the charter, the property tax transfer? Is there anything that can be done about that, or is it just the way property taxes come in?
It's, it's the way the property taxes come in, and, and charters in this, in the state have a favored status as, as you experienced in your deliberations over the last couple of months for the American Charter High School. You're very limited as a board and as a district as to what you can do to say no to a charter school. The financial impact on the district is not one of the issues, even though there's a major financial impact in the case of the elementary school district. And that's because they have a very experienced staff level at the top in the salary schedule. They're right at the cusp of being a basic aid district, and that all, I mean, there's a number of factors in at the elementary school district right now that, that contribute to the, the cash flow problem.
Other questions? Ms. Malikoff?
I always have trouble reading these charts inside this book. And I just need, just start me off here. The first table that's on page one, table, and it says, I love these headings, general fund, and then it says unrestricted and restricted. Is that really both the unrestricted and the restricted?
Does it say summary on it?
Summary unrestricted and restricted.
Right, yes.
So it is both of them.
So that's the, yeah, in, in the state report, what happens is that when you report, you report both, both parts of the general fund. Categorical programs that are sometimes referred to as categorical programs. And the other one is the general fund, which is the unrestricted portion of it.
That's what's confusing me is that above that, it says general fund.
Right. It's all the general fund.
Okay.
To, to let you know, within the, within the coding structure of, of the state of California, the general fund is, is 01. But districts have the option of separating those two funds, or separating the general fund into restricted and unrestricted portions, which would be three and six. We don't do that here. We just report everything under general fund 01. And so it, it is all the general fund. It, it is for the general operations of the district. It's just that there's some programs that are restricted and some that aren't.
I'm just curious, if I could look at that, if you would look at that table, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but it says transfers out, and that's where I was stuck, was the 647,000.
Okay.
What about is that?
It's page, page one, which is about five pieces of paper.
Pages in.
Yes.
The summary sheet, correct? It's on the summary sheet.
The summary sheet.
Oh, the transfer, transfers out in this, let's see.
I'm sorry, it just-
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to-
It's being quite large and-
Let me just go back to the detail here for a second. Okay, those are, those are the inner fund transfers out that we need to make contributions to the deferred maintenance fund. We're required to give three, or one half of 1% of the general fund to deferred maintenance. So that's, that's funding going out to the deferred maintenance and those, and those kind of, those requirements.
And those funds, Mr. Wolf, will, they will be matched from the state for deferred maintenance projects? Is that correct?
Well, yes. They're supposed to be.
The 600,000 is a deposit into Fund 14, which is your deferred maintenance fund. When districts fund, put funds into district, into Fund 14, the deferred maintenance fund, the state, they become eligible then for state matching funds to, to do projects around our schools' normal, normal routine maintenance.
The board approves a five-year plan that Mr. Hetjunk does and has, and deferred maintenance has specific items that are inside of that, Ruffey is one of them. The board, the state is supposed to match you, so you basically get 1% into the deferred maintenance fund every year. This year, the state didn't match 100%. They matched like 98 point something. But we were required to put our full amount in because we applied for Williams facilities funding.
Thank you so much.
Other questions? We've seen these materials a number of times. Is there a motion that someone would like to make? I can do it. I can move to adopt the second interim budget report for '06-'07.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So Harder, Malakoff, all those in favor of adopting the second interim budget report for this current school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass is 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of hard work went into that. We are on to item E4, approval or denial of administrative law judge's decision from certificated staff reduction in force hearing held on April 30th, 2007.
Good, I'd like Dr. Robertson to introduce this item.
Little bit of background, as you know, layoff hearing was held before an administrative law judge on April 30th in the boardroom in order to determine if the decisions made for reduction of force in March 2007 were done appropriately and legally. We received his ruling yesterday and the ruling has been attached in your documentation.
Basically... That ruling is on the dais, was not available when the board agenda went out. It just came in yesterday.
Just came in, I'm sorry.
So it's available on the back table and it's marked E4.
But the bottom line summary on that was that the, due to positive attrition, that the judge determined that we did not need to notice all 75 to 80 FTEs that were board approved, but that you do have the right to approve or deny the list of teachers who remain in terms, who were impacted by the judge's decision, that they will not be re-employed for the 2007-2008 school year as of right now. And this would become effective July 1st. The recommendation is that you either approve or you deny the administrative law judge's proposed decision. And it is a recommendation, and it's a proposed recommendation to you for consideration.
What is the practical difference between, what's the difference between that we were going to lay off 75 and now it's 48?
Is that... Due to attrition, retirements, resignations, we were able to rescind a number of offers prior to the hearing, not offers, but a number of people who we were riffed. At this point, we still have 48 people remaining and we're working very hard to bring about change. But right now, we're in a situation where you do need to make a decision tonight to approve or deny this recommendation.
Well, I'm sorry, Dr. Robertson, what would be the effect of denying the recommendation?
Budget cuts. Right now, they're not necessarily figured into, the budget cuts, as Mr. Wolf said, but...
No, I'm sorry. I mean, if we denied the recommendation, the previous, our previous action is moot, so none of the, so none of the teachers would be pink-slit. Is that, that's what I'm asking? Or does somehow revert back to any previous action?
Well, they've already been given notice, okay? And we've gone to the judge to make sure we've done everything legally and according to ed code and all the stipulations were given in terms of delivering notices to the staff. So he's giving us authority to say, we have done this correctly and you notified the staff correctly, now you need to make that final notice prior to May 15th. And this is the night in which you do that.
Okay, I'm sorry, the list is breathtaking.
But on the list, some say not applicable, so does that mean that these are ones that were not...
On the judgment?
What does the NA mean, rescinded riff?
In the final column.
Yeah, what is the final column?
I'm not sure what final column you're referring to.
The heading, it says, the heading on it is rescinded riff. And then some are blank and some say NA.
It means we haven't done it, we haven't rescinded the riff for that particular person or due to attrition, it wasn't applicable for us to rescind it.
Okay.
And the ones that are...
I'm sorry, and the ones that are blank, is that, does it mean?
I'm having to look at names here because Ann's was all color-coded. This is not color-coded. Some of these non-applicables are also those positions that were identified as specialist that could not be met to deal with those courses such as counselors, special education teachers, alternative education teachers, who would be very difficult for us to replace or have anybody else who'd be qualified to teach those courses. And a lot of the NA applies to them as well, too. We did not riff those people due to special circumstances as the law allows us.
So we can't really tell if they were riffed and didn't get it rescinded or were never riffed in the first place?
Not from this list, no.
Okay.
So then do we need to just go by the list that's in, that was in our agenda?
All you're needing to deal with is the 48 names that are on this.
Yeah. I think we have some public comment. Do people wish to hear the public comment? Okay.
Nicole McKee.
So, good evening. My name's Nicole McKee. I teach at Santa Barbara High School in the VADA program, strictly in the VADA program. And I'm here because there were a few things that I felt I was not represented on during the hearing and I would like to make sure that those are heard still. The lawyers chose, they said that they chose not to represent those findings, but I would like to restate them and make sure that they are heard. So first thing that happened, I was, I arrived at the hearing and I was told that my number was a certain lottery number that was given to me in my letter. And by the end of the hearing, I found out it was a new number. And I don't know what the due process is on receiving a new lottery number, but I was not told until I asked. And I don't know that I was going to be told, ever. And so that's one thing that I would like to make note of. Another thing is my job is very specific. I love my job. I fit in this job. And I love my students. And in VADA, I am not only a digital art teacher, I'm not only a freehand drawing teacher, but I take care of an entire digital lab. I coordinate every computer that goes in and out of that lab. I coordinate all the equipment. I take care of it. No other person on that campus takes care of my equipment. In fact, they're not allowed to. It is a parent-funded lab. And I do teach in that specialized academy. I do have credentials to prove it. I studied art studio in college, did graphic design as well as traditional art. And I did that on purpose so that I would be a rounded candidate for future jobs. And in the CTA criteria for exemptions to seniority, which I would like to quote, it states that there are some exceptions to the legal requirement to make layoffs in order of seniority. If a district demonstrates that it has a specific need for employees to teach a specific course of study, a certificated employee who has the necessary training and experience may be retained and others having more seniority may be laid off. It continues to say, districts may retain a teacher having specialized certification and lay off a more senior employee only if the retained junior individual can, currently teaches in an assignment that requires such certification. And I would argue, I do have all of that. I have been a graphic designer. I taught in the MAD Academy before I even became a teacher. And that was what made me want to become a teacher. Thank you. So I have a list of things that I am and what I do, and I'm not sure that anyone in this district could ever meet those requirements. And even if somebody is on seniority totem pole with me, I believe I am so specialized that there is no one in this district that could take my job. That's it.
Thanks, Ms. McKee. If you want to give the list to Dr. Robertson, then I have a question for you, Dr. Robertson. I think board members in general understand what it is we have to do tonight. And obviously, it's not pleasant. We've done it a number of times, or at least I've done it a number of times before. The question is really for your office, and it's certainly, certainly not an accusation, but we all realize how important process is, that people feel that they've been heard through the process because it's just insult to injury. So I guess I would ask you and your staff, after having gone through this very painful exercise, to take the time to review the process, to hear what your teachers have said to you who have gone through the reduction in force process and make adjustments. And I suspect you would have done that anyway, but I feel like I can't overlook that under these circumstances. So thank you for hearing me out and I know that you will direct your staff to have that conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from board members?
I have a question regarding Ms. McKee's comments. The issues that she raised about the change in her lottery number, is that something that needs to be directed to the bargaining unit? That is not an issue that the district can address, is it?
No.
So that would need to be...
The lottery was conducted by the union and the personnel office. So the union has been involved every step of the way in this process.
Okay. So if Ms. McKee feels that that was unfairly handled, that would be, need to be directed to the unit?
To me and the unit, yes.
But the issue, the other issue regarding seniority is one that the district would address. Is that correct or not?
I don't believe so. I still think it's a process of personnel and the union in regards to hire dates and all the criteria that's established.
I meant, we would have to decide whether we felt that that position was so necessary that it would warrant superseding standard seniority?
My feeling is that you can direct me to look into that. And I would need to confer with our legal authorities.
Okay. And so my question actually was, I'm assuming that we have probably done that already with these positions, correct?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That we've looked them, we have, for better or for worse, we've determined that these positions are ones that we could cut, however painful that is, and not cause irreparable damage to the programs that they, that they represent?
We would still be able to provide programs. I don't know how irreparable damage it would cause.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. Okay. So, but the point is that that has been considered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And to, I'm sorry, can I add something else in regard to this process? Not only in terms of the personnel office working with the union, is we had a preliminary meeting with the attorneys from CTA and Lever Cassidy Whitmore to run through the entire process prior to the administrative law judge to catch any errors or mistakes that could have occurred and would have then and there dictated that we do any redrawing or renumbering or changing seniority.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there was only a few things, and the judge, as you see from his decision, found for the most part, everything was conducted according to law.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Parker?
But just speaking on this specific case, were principals called in on this? Because certainly, if there's a very specific class that needs to be offered, it might be that personnel would just look at this person and label them an art teacher, when in fact, they aren't just an art teacher. So how was that, how are the dots connected there?
The personnel office is the one who maintains and has all of the records on file for every teacher in this district, who knows exactly what they have, what they've done, what they've completed, what their transcripts say, what we can qualify them for, what ed codes allows us to do. The principals would not necessarily have any and all of that information without coming down here to us. And we're not a part of the process because we had to apply a legal process, not a, here's how I feel about it, I need this person. And I understand that, but, and we heard that, but we had to follow the letter of the law.
So following the letter of the law may mean that Santa Barbara High can't offer this particular course next year. They might need to offer an art course, but it wouldn't be that one.
It may mean that, yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, is there a motion? I will move to approve the administrative law judge's decision from certificated staff reduction in force hearing held April 30th, 2007. Actually, I'm wondering if it should be worded in terms of adopting the resolution?
I'm sorry, yes, adopting the resolution.
Yeah, I suspect that it probably does. So will the, second or the motion allow me to rephrase it?
Please.
Move to adopt the decision of the administrative law judge in termination of certificated employees, resolution number '06-'07-33.
Say.
Thank you. All those in favor of adopting the decision of the judge signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, one of those really happy moments in being a board member. Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Shall we take a break? It's early, but would people like to take a break at this point?
Yes.
Okay. We'll take a brief break. And we are on to item E5, approval to establish a joint city and school district property task group, oh, a task group committee, I'm sorry, to consider the options for school district properties. That's quite a long title.
The board will remember at our January 19 joint city council and board meeting, we talked about the possibility of meeting with a couple of city council members, a couple of board members and staffs, both city and district, to discuss various options about land in the city of Santa Barbara, whether it was the Hidden Valley property, perhaps district-owned downtown property, perhaps redevelopment agency property for the city of Santa Barbara, and what the possibilities were. Well, we worked with the city and we worked with our attorneys, both the city's and our own, to draft this task group. As you can see, it would consist of two representatives from the school board, two from the city with an alternate from the city. You know, the city has seven council members rather than our five. So they can involve more people at one time. It would be a Brown Act committee. It would require public noticing. It would use a set meeting schedule. And we would work through the issues of what the district has as options for the Hidden Valley property specifically and what other options there might be. There would be no action from the committee. It would come back to the board for action. The same format, the same description is being taken to the city council meeting at the next city council meeting. And we're expecting them to appoint city council members to this joint property task group.
Thanks, Dr. Sarvis. First, are there any comments on the committee description?
Yes, I'm interested why there's not any other membership on the committee besides, I mean, I'm, well, yeah.
Membership by whom? I'm sorry, I'm not...
I realize this is a joint task force of the school board and the city council to look at the issues, but I'm concerned that if it, that not having any outside representation, say, an at-large public, member of the public...
I see what you're saying.
That any recommendations that come forward will be... That any recommendations that come forward will be suspect.
And yet, it's a Brown Act committee, and anyone would be able to attend.
Well, it is a Brown Act committee. Well, I believe the idea was, in our January meeting, the idea was to be able to sit down and talk frankly about what various options were. It was not to formulate a community committee because whatever those options were that came back here to the school board or to the city council would then be subject to that kind of discussion, a broader, with broader community input. It wasn't designed in any way to be a back room committee. It is a Brown Act committee.
Yeah. And I don't mean to suggest that, that I think there is any design to leave anybody out or anything like that. I'm just not sure that it'll serve a useful purpose without having, you know, more buy-in from the general public.
I would submit that it would take more than one member of the general public
That's probably true.
To achieve that. No, I think we'll need a much more inclusive public process, once we can identify what the various options are.
Yeah. I see this as coming up with ideas such that the public can react to.
Other comment, Ms. Parker?
I'm just mulling over what Mrs. Cordero had to say, and, and thinking about, obviously, we don't have anything like this with any other agency. And I'm wondering if the city is running any joint, I mean, obviously, they have their own sort of committees, but do they have any other joint project going with any other sort of...
I can't answer that. Dave, do you know?
Sort of the Armory is a little bit...
My gosh, they've got committees all over the place. I suppose the Armory Committee is a joint task group.
With whom? But I mean, another, like, elected body?
Well, it involves...
The Park Foundation, city council, and I don't know what other community members...
But it's just the city council is the elected body? So this is, this doesn't really fall in the same kind of category as, as say, a general, general committee?
No. This is, this is a specific group for a specific purpose, and it's not designed to be an ongoing committee. It's, it's more of an ad hoc process.
I was just wondering, has the city discussed this yet?
They will be at their next city council meeting.
I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more, well, I, yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not quite sure what this task force would accomplish. And I think that I remember our discussion about wanting to set it up, and it seemed like it would be a good idea, but in the intervening period, we've also had more input from members of the public about a variety of things that we have been considering, not, not all related to this topic, but areas where members of the general public have felt that issues have been sort of decided, and I have to preface that by saying that I think they have thought that erroneously, but they have had the idea that issues have been decided before, before they had a chance to have input. And so I don't want to set up a process that's going to be perceived that way again, because I'm convinced that this would, it would not be that, and it hasn't been in the past, but I think things have often been misperceived as having been sort of, had a lot more finality to it when it really didn't. I think that we are still in the process of making a lot of decisions that people have assumed are sort of fait accompli, when we are still wide open to ideas. But I don't want to set up a situation that's going to likely be perceived that way again. And so I'm wondering if, if it would be more appropriate for the staffs to meet and have discussion, and then bring it to the two bodies?
We could certainly do that, but I think I need to remind you of the discussion at the joint meeting. There were a couple of city council members who were anxious to sit down and just have discussions about what the possibilities were. And in the overall process, we're not very far along. In fact, we haven't even gotten to the point where you would normally take something that's, that has a conceptual design and move it to the point of public process so that we get input from everyone. So we're really in the idea phase, and a couple of city council members wanted to have some discussions with us about what those ideas could be. So, well, that's probably enough said.
The last meeting, we had some, we had the impression that they had some intriguing ideas that we could, you know, I wanted to do it right then, and it sounded more like at that point, we were going to just have these sort of closed sort of staff meetings and just sort of work it out. I think this is a much better plan, is to open it up and have it Brown Acted, and now everybody can see the process, and we can, you know, throw it open. And I think that's even, I like this even better than, than just having it in the back room somewhere and just staff talking it over and coming. This way, it will, we'll kind of hear about it all, all the way through the process.
Well, I'm certainly willing to entertain the, the concept that it, that it will work, and that it's an appropriate thing. I'm just, I'm concerned about perceptions, I think.
Well, I have a hesitation for a very different reason, and that is that as a board, we've never, we've received reports about these surplus properties, but we've never actually had a full-on board discussion about the properties. And when we sat through that joint school board, city council meeting in January...
Yes.
I'll take your word for it.
January 19?
There you go. I think I was taken aback at the number of ideas that were out there, but the fact that I felt like somehow somebody was taking, you know, taking off with ideas in a direction that the board had not even had a chance to, you know, have an initial discussion even. So, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to move forward with the committee. We, the other alternative is, we could put it on the agenda next week, which would be at the same time that the city council would be putting it on their agenda. I mean, I don't know what that would serve, except that it would give you time to think more, talk to more people, that sort of thing.
Yeah. We weren't planning to meet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Far be it from me to be the cause of another meeting.
But we could. Well, we thought this is the kind of structure and process that had been talked about in the meeting, so we tried to...
I think it was. I think it was. I'm, I'm just having concerns about in the intervening time, in terms of things that have taken place, whether it was, whether it's the best structure. But if people think it is, I'm willing to consider it.
Actually, I would, I want to throw in another wrinkle, and that is, I was contacted by a representative from one of our county supervisors, and the county is interested in something like this with, you know, to facilitate discussion with regard to the Tatum property. So, you know, I don't know whether that makes life more or less complicated, certainly more time, potentially another committee, but that is another, another wrinkle to consider.
Well, I don't think, I mean, just because they're two, I think it needs to be two different committees, because there's a county situation and a city situation. But what I like about this is that I sometimes feel like we've hesitated on the board discussion because we know that there are other things out there that are possibilities that we don't know, and so it always seems like we kind of get stymied and stuck. So I do like the idea of moving forward and having that discussion in an, in an open format, and where it's public and people can give comment and really be part of the process. And then, we can have a full range of options that the board can discuss.
Maybe I'm speaking personally, because I was absent from that meeting where the, the draft feasibility plan was, was presented. So I didn't, wasn't able to participate in any board discussion. That's fine. Now that we've discussed the content of it, we would be, our job tonight would be to appoint members.
Should we approve it first, and then appoint members?
We can.
Or just approve it?
We can.
I move to approve a joint city and school district property task group committee to consider the options for school district properties within the city limits.
Okay. So there's that proviso within the city?
Second.
Okay. So, motion made by Ms. Parker with the addition of within the city limits. Seconded by Ms. Malakoff. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. So, one abstention. And then, do we want to appoint members tonight, or do you want to do that at a separate time?
I prefer that you appoint two board members. In fact, part of this, part of the idea was to actually sit down and have a discussion so that we, when we go back to the joint city council meeting, then we could involve the Fuller Board and Fuller City Council in the direction that they were planning to take.
When is the meeting?
Well, how about next Tuesday? No, we'd probably set it for the, the end of May.
The, wait, the joint meeting with the city council?
Oh, oh, the joint meeting was scheduled for June 8.
Is it, was, or it isn't anymore, or it still is?
I think tentatively scheduled, was that it?
It is scheduled right now for June 8.
For June 8.
Yes. That was a Friday.
It's nice to have this before.
Okay. Potential members. I know it was Ms. Malakoff's original suggestion.
Yes. I'd certainly volunteer if, if nominated. I don't know how this works.
Well, you can self-nominate. That works most efficiently. Anyone else? I know, Ms. Parker, you had expressed an interest.
I mean, I think all of us would be interested in doing it. I'm not sure how we decide who does it. You're not interested in doing it?
No.
I mean, I certainly would be, too.
Do we want to wait on this piece until Dr. Noel is present, and see if he wants to throw us hat in, and then if there were, are that many people, then we can draw names out of a hat or decide it some other way? Sure. Okay.
When, we don't meet for another two weeks. We have to, and you're saying to have a meeting at the end of May?
If, if we didn't appoint the members until May 22, we probably would not meet before the joint, meet, joint city council board meet.
I think we should somehow figure out a way that, and to figure out two people just to, just in case we want to meet, and just to, to set a date.
I'm sorry, I'm extremely confused. I thought that the meeting was tentatively scheduled for June 8.
June 8 is, yes.
Wait, we're talking about two different meetings.
I'm sorry, two different meetings. The, the meeting, in order to have a meeting before...
For this task force.
Of this task force, before June 8, it seems like we have to sort of do this rather soon, sort of schedule our times, and I'm just thinking that if we waited two weeks, it's a long time to wait, and then try to schedule another meeting with everybody else in that intervening two weeks?
So you're saying we should appoint the members now?
We should do it tonight.
No, I absolutely don't, but that's okay.
Can I try again?
Well, if we, if you know that the meeting is on June 8...
No, it's, no, there's going to be another meeting before then.
No, I'm talking about this committee meeting.
No, the committee meeting isn't June 8.
Okay. We have a meeting May 22nd, and then June 8.
But the June 8 one is, is the joint city council, the big one, and she's saying that the small one needs to be before then.
Some, sometime.
Hopefully, would be before then, so that when we meet jointly...
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
People organize different things differently in their heads.
In the interest of setting the, the meeting, the, I don't know what I'm saying. The appointments tonight, I would be happy to perhaps serve as an alternate?
And it actually asked for two members plus an alternate, I believe, in the...
From the city council.
The city council was going to appoint an alternate, but can we just...
You're correct, because they have seven members. Thank you. Okay.
But can we have an alternate?
Couldn't we have an alternate? Or change our...
If we have two board members discussing...
Oh, I know, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, I forgot.
If a member comes in, that's a problem.
Doesn't work.
But if it's an alternate, they're not there.
Yeah, but they cannot alternate. One cannot not appear at a meeting and have the person sit in for them, because then you have three people in the loop.
But if it's an, if it's a Brown Act meeting, we could attend anyways. Any board member could attend.
Yes.
And would, is that going to pose a problem for, for the Brown Act?
Well...
I mean, theoretically, all five of us could be there. Only two people would be on the, on the committee.
It's hard, because in this particular case, when we have Brown Act, like workshops and so forth, we're not talking about board business, but this...
But this one, we are.
We'd be talking about board business. Don't know how that works.
When we have a bond oversight committee, other board members may attend.
Yes. And that's board business.
But we don't set it up so that we have a majority on the bond oversight.
All right. Can we seek, I'll withdraw my request to be appointed, but can we seek legal clarification over whether or not we can have a, an alternate?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay.
I can go get legal counsel on the phone if you'd like.
So is there a, is there a motion? Are two people volunteering?
I think two are just volunteering right now.
Okay. So that's Ms. Malakoff and Ms. Parker? Yes? Okay. So will someone make a motion?
I move to appoint Ms. Malakoff and Ms. Parker to this new joint task group.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. So Ms. Cordero, Ms. Malakoff, all those in favor of approving both of these members as the, the representatives to this committee signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. That's it. Go ahead. I don't, I don't want to cut you off, but we've concluded our discussion.
Well, I just came because it said this was going to be discussed at 9:15, so...
We're ahead of our agenda, surprisingly enough, but please make your comments.
Okay. Yeah. We just wanted to, to comment that since it says in here in the staff report that this joint task force of the board and the city is also going to be discussing the Tatum property, which is actually in the county, why wouldn't Supervisor Wolf be included in the task force?
Actually, I'm, I'm sorry that you missed that piece of the conversation. I received a phone call from Mary O'Gorman and expressing their interest, and we will be dealing with that.
Okay. I'm sorry, we came, but we came according to the, according to the schedule.
I understand, I understand.
And the, the motion was changed so that it read that we were only going to be discussing with this task force, school district properties within the city limits.
Within the city limits.
Okay. So then this has been changed?
You're covered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for taking the time to come. Okay. So that, that concludes item E5. Item E6, approval of resolution urging denial of petition of proposed transfer of territory to Cold Spring School District.
Well, this is, this is similar to the petition you saw before. This is one piece of property, the borders, the Cold Spring boundary. We considered this, gosh, it was over a year ago. This was appealed to the county. The county denied the petition. It was appealed to the state board. I went to the state board and presented to the state and said essentially, our school district is 140 years old, our boundaries are coterminous with the city of Santa Barbara boundaries, and that should not change unless there's a compelling educational reason. I don't believe there is any more compelling educational reason to transfer property to another district. Cold Spring is also considering a similar resolution. They're not interested either. I would urge you to approve this resolution.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
I am a little curious, because the, the hearing is next week, is that correct?
Yes.
But you've been through this process before, sitting board members. Did you attend the hearing, some of you?
I think Dr. Sarves did.
County reorganization hearing? Yes. Last, last year.
And you also went to Sacramento to hear it in front of the state board, did you not?
I wasted a day going to Sacramento to the state board.
But board members didn't attend at the county or other...
No, but you're certainly welcome to.
I believe that last time it was held on the same night as a board meeting.
And actually, I'm...
And it could have been this time too, because it's being held next Tuesday, but it just happened not to be meeting.
And it's partially being held here, is that correct? It's like a.
Correct, so you'd be free to come to the hearing, then the hearing would take place here. Yeah, it was.
It will begin at, at Cold Springs, and then it will move here.
Absolutely correct.
Why is that? They want to include both places?
They have to include both places, required to, they're required to hold the meeting at both places.
They want to allow input from the, the two districts.
Last time, have we seen this property before, or was, it was a previous, it was a different property?
No, it's the same property.
It's the same property, okay.
It's different owners.
Different owners.
It changed, the property changed hands.
Very curious indeed. Okay. Now we are on to.
Oh, did we vote on that?
I don't think we voted on our.
I apologize.
So we had a motion from.
We had a motion.
Annette Cordero, and a second from Laura Malikoff. Thank you.
Thank you very much for keeping me on task. All those in favor of approving the resolution urging denial of the petition of proposed transfer of territory to Cold Spring School District signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it passes for zero. Now our expulsions. And if we could take them in the order listed on the summary sheet, that would be helpful to me.
Do we have, do we need to vote on, on each one separately, or can we vote on them as a group?
You, I, I don't know if we, if legally we must do them separately. Aye, thank you.
Okay. In 0607-62, move to approve the findings and recommendation of the hearing panel.
I'm sorry, I'm just keeping track of motions and, and seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So it passes for zero. So then in 0607-60.
Move to approve the finding and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did I hear you, Mrs. Parker?
Yes.
Passes for zero.
In 0607-57, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes for zero.
In 0607-59, move to approve the, the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes for zero.
0607-61, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes for zero.
In 0607-58, move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so they all pass for zero. And Ms. Cordero was the motion maker, and Ms. Malikoff was the second, or it did, did make it easy tonight with so many expulsions. Okay, we are on to our conference agenda, I believe. And the first item is the first reading of the revision of Board Bylaw 9250, Remuneration, Reimbursement, and Other Benefits.
This was occasioned by the board discussion of budget cuts, and I brought it to you for your consideration, and since it's first reading, it's on conference tonight, it would be brought back to you for the second reading at the next meeting.
Any, any discussion? We had a pretty lively discussion when it was proposed. Go ahead, Ms. Malikoff.
I'll say it again, that I think it's very difficult to be on the school board, to have a full-time job, and to have young children in school. And I see that this is a compensation, so that a person could perhaps work a little less than a full-time job and do this, this job as well. And I think if we go down in salary, that we lose people with children, we lose a significant segment of the population that should have their voice on the school board.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'll reiterate my concerns too, and, and I'm, I recall that when Ms. Rodriguez was on the board, she pointed out, because at the time, this was the salary, that for her needing to, or taking the, the insurance benefits, required her to pay out of pocket because the $200 did not cover the cost of the insurance. And I'm wondering, first of all, is that still the case? Because if it is, then it.
Yes.
Requires a person not only to not be, not really be very well compensated for the, for the work on the board, but also then to have to pay out of pocket for serving on the board. Which, I, I just reiterate my concern that it dramatically reduces the number of people who are able to run for this office.
Let me just throw this out there. This item regularly comes in front of the board. It happens, this is the first time this board has seen it. It's sort of regularly been thrown back and forth, it's been up, it's been down, and that sort of thing. And currently, I'm the only board member who receives insurance benefits, and I do pay out of pocket. I realize you were talking about the salary.
No, I actually do, I, I realize I paid dental.
Okay, okay, so there's two of us. And after our discussion of last week, I started the investigation of shifting off the district-provided insurance benefits, but it concludes in September, that's when the re-enrollment period is. So I'd be there until September, but I do plan on, on going off.
But I want to say that I.
But I, I do agree with you, and I would be very much in favor of bringing it back for consideration when the next election season rolls around.
And, first of all, I want to say, I, I don't think, I mean, actually, the, the health benefit is much greater than the $200 or $400. I mean, that's actually the biggest benefit. And even if you're, you may be paying out of pocket, but for your $200, you're getting this huge $6,000 benefit. And so it's still, the medical benefits are still significant. But I really have wanted to say that I don't want, by doing this, I feel like the district is just in such bad shape financially that this was one way of making a statement that we recognize this. Frankly, I think that at the state level, they need to be reconsidering for a district of this size if $400 is enough, because it, it is a, a huge deterrent to people. And I don't feel like $200 makes that much difference, I think $400 is way too little. But I also want to say that in proposing this, I did not mean to show any disrespect to this office, because I think that it's a tremendous amount of work for us all. And like Mrs. Harder, it is something that I think will need to be revisited. But as it stands, I just feel like we and district staff as well need to stand sort of shoulder to shoulder with what the staff are going through, and with the changes in service to our students.
Well, I just want to respond to that. Several years ago, when we were proposing making budgets, and even before I was on the board, when I was on a committee that made proposals to the board about budget cuts, I have always resisted across-the-board cuts, because I believe that they do disproportionately impact those employees, in this case, it would be board members, but, but I'm actually not, with all due respect to my colleagues, not as concerned about current board members as I am about future board members. But I have always felt that they disproportionately impact those employees at the bottom, at the lowest level of, lowest salary levels. Because to take, you know, a salary, a decrease in salary, if you're making a substantial salary, doesn't impact your standard of living as much as taking a salary decrease or a salary adjustment if you're at the lowest level where you are struggling to meet your, your monthly, you know, obligations. So I think even though it's, it's maybe not a lot, and I agree with you that for maybe, for many people, it wouldn't necessarily be the, the deciding factor in whether or not they run for this office, I, I just really object to make, to anything that makes it less likely that people will be able to run. And a situation where people not only don't get compensated very well, but they actually have to pay out of pocket to serve on the board if they want to take advantage of the benefits that it offers. Then, I mean, benefits are one of the things that could make it possible for some people to, to serve on the board, even though the salary isn't great. And if they have to actually then pay out of pocket to take those salaries, to take those benefits, it just seems to further dissuade people from wanting to serve in this position. I, I think that if we look over the history of who has served on this, on this board, we can see that it hasn't been a broadly diverse group of people. And I just, I cannot support anything that would, you know, be another obstacle to having greater diversity.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I'll, couple things. One is that I feel like as long as this is essentially a volunteer position, we are never going to get a diverse group on this board, and I think it's very, very unfortunate, but that's the way it goes. But I've noticed, and reflecting on this, that over the years I've been watching the board, and I've seen this discussion come up before, and this time as well, it, it sort of bounced between that $400, $200 thing, when really afterwards, I was reflecting, it should have been a percentage. It should have been a discussion about, okay, if we're going to make cuts, should it be a 10% cut to the board salary? Should it be 25%? I mean, this is a 50% cut. So in the future, I hope this institutional memory holds when the next time it comes up, because I hope it will go up next time, but maybe we need to talk about increasing it by 10% or 20% in the future. And then if, just keeping the discussion on that level, rather than bouncing between, are we going to have it, are we going to eliminate it, just so it goes in a slightly different path the next time.
Well, we have time to be thinking about how we're going to be voting on this.
May I just mention?
Certainly.
The board made cuts primarily so that we could pay salaries at higher levels, and it was ironic that the board then cut their own. I, I would like to note that in the second paragraph, you will see that the ed code limit for a district this size, yes, was $400. However, the ed code also provides that on an annual basis, that amount can be increased by up to 5%. So there are some districts that have done that, not very many districts have, to my knowledge. At one point, we did a, a survey of other districts, and those districts around us, they were all over the board. I mean, some were at 400, some were at zero, and it all depended the dis, on the district. But there is also the option in the future of taking that amount and further increasing that amount annually, so that it does become something that is more substantial than $400.
All true. And just one quick observation with regard to your comments, Ms. Cordero. I, I know exactly where your comments are coming from, and this is from a completely different angle, but this is the first school board that I can think of that, since I've lived in Santa Barbara, where the majority of the board members were women. So. I suppose that's a change in diversity, for whatever it's worth. Okay, so this will come back to us, and board members will have time to reflect on the discussion for a couple of weeks. Oddly enough, it says jumps from item F1 to F3. So we didn't, didn't catch that, that typo in going over the draft. But so we are, on to item F3, the first reading of science textbook adoption and instructional materials for grades 7 through 12.
Which is listed as F2.
Which is listed as F2, thank you. In fact, let me, at this point, make a note of both corrections, which is, for this item that is F3, you'll find it in your binder under F2, and the attachment is marked as F2. The following item, which is listed here on the agenda as F4, is actually listed and marked as F3. So it's just a mistake on the cover of the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, so is that Mr. Zettel?
Yes, thank you. The district is currently following the state guidelines on textbook adoption, and this year is science. And we've been going through a review process of all of the available science texts, which are many. We have some of those texts in the adjoining room for the public and for yourselves to review. We're not quite done yet. This is a, a chance for you to see which ones the department has decided on to this point, in terms of the science, and they have a few more that they're waiting on to look at, to make decisions on. So this is, is kind of a heads up for you, as the first reading on this. You can also see additional instructional materials that are being requested. Also, in art, in foreign language, performing arts, and English, and in English. The AP classes are noticeably aligned to the AP test, and the standards within those textbooks have to coincide with what the students are going to be tested on, as the other textbooks are. The Holt textbooks that you see in science are aligned to state standards, not AP standards, but state standards. We request, as part of the process, a, an alignment from the publisher, so that teachers understand as they look at these texts, where the alignment is, and in, and in, you know, what scope and sequence. So we've got quite a lengthy process, quite a good written backup, which is not included here for each of these texts. So there we are, are there questions?
Mr. Zettel, could you also comment on STAR testing in science? Because we know that that has been added over the years, and we now have STAR testing in a number of grade levels.
Yes, I believe, and this is going from memory, which is not always the best. Grades 6, 8, and 9.
I thought it was, I thought 5, and, yes, go ahead.
If anybody knows what they tell me, please. I have it written on my desk, and I didn't bring it with me tonight, I'm sorry. But what, what we need to be aware of is that it is in the STAR test arena now, and will be course-specific as the students get into ninth grade. So we need to be well-aware of that, and at what grade levels they'll be tested, which may bring our curriculum into a new and different kind of alignment as we look at that, what they're being tested on.
I think it's rather interesting that at one of those grade levels, all students need to take a science test, but then at, at the high school level. But then, just like in math, where you have an algebra, geometry, algebra II test, you have the same sort of a, a course-specific science test in each of the science areas. Yes.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I just. The, the non-fiction, I'm so, I'm sorry, the fictional materials that are listed under English, are those, do those have, do, do those have to come from an adopted list at the state? Or do we have more discretion in the fictional choices?
We have discretion in the fictional choices. The state puts out a supplementary list for us, grade level by grade level, and the district typically has not adopted that. Last year, I made it very clear to the department chairs that we were to, to begin to align, you know, what supplementary texts should, or supplementary readings would be available grade by grade, so that, you know, if we had movement in the district, we weren't going to have kids doubling up on, oh, I read that last year, which hadn't been done before. And so that work is current, and I will be meeting actually with one of the departments out at San Marcos to talk about those ideas again also, then a week or so.
Periodically, we get a correspondence from a gentleman in the community who reminds us.
us of the lack of diversity in our literature choices in terms of the authors that are in our adopted lists. And I'm, in this list, I don't see ethnic diversity represented in terms of authors of color or non-Western authors. And I'm just wondering how we are currently doing in that regard.
Our department, district-wide, is well aware of that. Our librarians are well aware of the request that we begin to diversify our selection a little bit more. As we, as these are supplementary, I think, having been on an English department, in an English department, I know kind of how it works. And that is, teachers have to read the supplementary reading, get excited about it, and then want to teach it. And that needs to happen. We need to leave behind the readings from old dead white guys and move on. It's a new world, very diverse world, and students need to be, you know, instructed in that. So that's my, you know, charge to them. It is, you know, at this point, because we haven't said, you will teach this now, we can only suggest.
Well, I think we need to do more than suggest if we're not seeing any, if we're not seeing the response that we need. I don't think we need to leave behind old dead white guys because I happen to like some of them very much. But I do think we need to make sure that we are do, that we are seeing a change and a response to this. I don't, I really don't think just suggesting is enough when we, and here I'm going back to my days when I wasn't on the board, we have been raising this issue for 20 years. I think that's too long to be just suggesting.
May I remind the board that a number of months ago, Mr. Zettel had a, had a list of, of books by minority authors, and we put those in the board brief. And I believe that you shared the same list with Mr. Weissglas.
Yes.
Doctor.
I did. But the process of choice in teaching materials in English is rather open. Now, as a district, we can adopt a new curriculum and mandate it in a scope and sequence and be very directive with that. And we could align it with, actually, the testing that we need to align it with and with where our students may be going into community college or into colleges or universities because I know that we're not doing well on those tests. Right now, we have a mindset that all we teach is literature. So there are, there are some real issues out there that the department is grappling with and taking sides on right now. So it matters how prescriptive that the board feels they want to get with a curriculum.
And I just realized, as you were saying that, or when you started to say that, that I don't want my comments to be construed as suggesting that I think we should mandate what the teachers are selecting because I'm a great believer in academic freedom. What I really meant is I think the, as a district, we need to provide, be providing the faculty with training and sort of opportunities to become aware in a, in a very serious way about, first of all, what's available. And maybe they will get excited and want to teach a particular thing, but also why it is so important to do that. Because I think a lot of times, people continue with whatever they're familiar with, not out of any, you know, desire to be, you know, traditional or conventional or, and because there's some great literature and we just can't teach it all. So I don't want to, I don't want the staff in any way to think that I'm suggesting that you should mandate what teachers, what teachers choose for their supplemental reading. But I really do think we need to take a very proactive role in convincing teachers of the need to do this.
I really appreciate that clarification. Knowing the autonomous group of English teachers that we have, the mandate would not sit very well. But, but the ability to have options and to learn and to read more would certainly be welcome. Thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to think of ways to connect what you're saying with what books teachers are actually choosing because I think we're all talking the same language, but that filtering down process is what's missing. And I'm not sure, I think we need to think about how we want to be able to link that up and then maybe come back for a different discussion, not having nothing to do with, you know, adopting these particular textbooks. But I think that we need to have that conversation, how we can make that linkage. Item F4 on the agenda, but actually item F3 and marked as an F3 attachment, time permitting, which we have, a first reading of new board policies on community relations, board policy series 1,000. And I believe we can just start making our way through these. And I'll go down the list and if people have something that they want to add, subtract, change, whatever. So board policy 1,000, concepts and roles. Board policy 1,000. I'm sorry, 1,100, I misspoke and you're looking.
1,000.
Well, the list that I have here starts with 1,000. Okay.
That's what you have, right? Now you have 1,100.
Yeah. No, I've got it. I just turned one page too many.
You're way ahead of us.
No, it's okay. Concepts and roles. Any comments, corrections?
I'm confused. I thought we were doing, I just kept them before.
No, it looks different in our new board packet.
If you kept what you had from before, it's the third section. It's that final section.
Right. Correct.
It has a cover sheet that says.
We did our revision on the middle section. Okay.
To be adopted. Is that what your cover sheet says?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're all on the same page, literally. So any comments about board policy 1,000? Okay, then, board policy 1,100, communication with the public. Okay.
Wait, no, no, I'm sorry. Too fast, too fast. This, but this comment actually applies to 1,100, 1112, and 1113. And I'm trying to think if, I don't think it applies to 1114. Well, the AR for 1113 as well as the board policy. And that is that we have focused on trying to get all of our publications and media relations to be translated into Spanish. And I would like to see that reflected in these policies, especially since.
You mean that the policies are translated as well?
Well, that would be nice, yes. But I meant that the policy reflect that we will translate these items. Well, for example, such as the district website. We had, I have, I didn't check it this week, but last week when I was looking for the agenda for last week on the board site, the Spanish translation of agendas only went up to the previous board meeting. So anybody who was looking for a Spanish translation for the agenda for that evening would not have been able to find it.
It should have been on for that evening. You're right.
And so, but not only that, I mean, I'm actually happy with, we've, I think we've made a lot of progress because there didn't used to be anything. But I would just like to see that embedded in our policy. In our policies.
How, I, one of my concerns is time and cost, but I would like to, how do you, how would you like it embedded in the policy?
Well, I guess, for example, just somewhere in our policy, maybe content that are, or maybe a preamble to this, to these that, if we think, I actually don't want to give us an out, but maybe somebody else will, that we, that all district documents intended for public consumption will be provided in translation.
I'm, I'm, I'm back where Ms. Parker is. I mean, there are thousands and thousands and thousands of documents on that website and we produce, I mean, I look at a board packet and there are thousands, I mean, thousands of, hundreds of pages. I'm wondering, and it's, it's the time and the cost. I'm wondering if there's a way, as opposed to translating each document, that there could be someone bilingual to contact if someone wants a particular document. I realize that's a big hurdle, but I'm just not, I'm not sure how to go about tackling it from a practical standpoint.
We have Barbara Chione with us tonight. Barbara, could you come to a microphone, slide up to a microphone there? Because we've talked about this issue in a number of ways in the past and, and here until just tonight, I thought we had succeeded in getting our board agendas translated and having those online ready for people. There are major difficulties with time and cost. And one of the major difficulties with the board agendas is that if we're late in the agenda in any way and it hasn't gone through legal review, then we don't have it ready for the translator to get it translated. Barbara?
Well, I can check on what our turnaround time is and get back to you on that because I'll need to talk with our webmaster. She, she definitely focuses on getting the English version out as soon as we can. But the Spanish, again, we are depending on the availability of our translator. So, but I will be happy to do that and get back to you.
Barbara, we've talked about other documents as well.
And we have put a number of other documents on the website. So we do, you know, I think maybe setting some goals as to, for example, the board policies, getting those online could be, it's going to be a big job, but we certainly, and we only have one translator who does a whole lot of different things for the district. So if that's a decision that the board would like to have, say, as a goal, all policies translated, we can, we can do something along that line or focus on that.
May I suggest that we start by simply listing in a memo format and we can put it in the board brief, what we do have translated.
Yes.
And maybe just start with those items on the website.
And, and I'm, one of my concerns here is that I know that the district translator provides, if we're, if we're going to talk about, like, try not to expand costs which we can't afford, I know that the district translator provides support to school sites for things like newsletters and things like that, that I would, I would just be concerned that we're so busy translating these policies that when sites need help on a, on a more urgent basis in communicating with parents and something that really might be more relevant, I just, I want to be sure that we don't take precedence here. I think that what's going on at the sites and the principal support is more important if it comes down to it just being incredibly expensive to extend or add in more translation.
She, some of her work is done directly for the PTAs and some of it is done for the district. I'm not sure what the split is right now, but I, again, I can find out. But I would be happy to give you sort of a summary of all the things that are, that have been translated because we have put a focus on doing that, as you said, Ms. Cordero, compared to where we were, say, a year ago or two years ago.
Well, I don't know exactly what the process should be for, for moving in that direction. But I think in a district like ours, with the demographics that we have, our, our goal should be to provide, anything that we provide for English-speaking parents, we should also provide for Spanish-speaking parents. And that, and obvious, maybe we can't do that overnight, but I definitely think that should be our goal.
And can I add that all of our forms are translated, any communication that goes out are translated, and that's all done by this translator? So, you know, on a day-to-day basis, we do have a great deal of information that we consciously make sure are, you know, is done in both languages.
And, and I do greatly appreciate that, and I know that there are many, many, many families in the community that appreciate that. And I just think we need to, I, my only desire tonight was just to embed that in our policy.
I hate, I'm, I'm fine with that, but then I also think that we need to have some kind of action plan. And it almost sounds like what we really need is some kind of triage plan because we know that we don't have the resources to cover everything. I think Ms. Parker's indicated a critical need, you know, at the sites. And, I mean, maybe we need to try and determine what is most critical. I mean, we're looking at the board policy and we're board members and we think this is very important, but maybe it's not as important as some other documents. So I'm just wondering if there's, if we move forward with embedding that in the policy and then we put together some kind of action plan, whether we look at more critical needs first. Sure. And did you have any, I don't know if you want to forward some suggestion for how, wording on how to embed it in the policy?
Yeah, perhaps I could, I could talk to Dr. Jarvis about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So you mentioned that for 1,100, 1112, 1113, board policy and administrative regs. Were there any other comments up to that point? Up to 1113?
Sorry, just on 1113, two of three.
Board policy or the regs?
The, the, sorry, board policy. Two, almost halfway, district and school website shall not post the home address or telephone number of any elected official without our prior written permission. I don't, I, it's fine to have it on there. I don't know that we've ever been asked for our written permission for it to be on there. I just thought I'd point that out.
This is actually kind of interesting to me because we, it's, I don't think our home address or telephone numbers are on our websites, but we were put on the county website with our home addresses without being asked. So, and also, I think everybody's in the phone book, but nobody uses the phone book anymore.
But, but our, our, our election materials, when we filed to run, are public documents. So that, all that information is public anyways.
So I guess we could cross off on here our written prior knowledge or whatever permission. And, well, still doesn't happen.
Maybe for the elected, but not for appointed. I mean.
Ah. But I think it's, well, we can, we don't have to have it on the website, which is good. I think it's fine just to have our email addresses and so forth. But I'm not sure we need our, I don't know.
I actually have no problem with, I mean, three of us currently have district email addresses anyway. And I have no problem with phone number. I mean, I have to say, I do have a problem with the address. And there's a very specific reason, and that is, I have had two, since in the six years I've been on the board, unannounced knocks on the door early on a Saturday morning. Yes, indeed. Where it would have been nice to get a phone call first from an employee of the district. So it would, like I say, it would have been nice to have had a phone call and arranged for a meeting, whether at my home or, you know, somewhere else. So I, I guess I would prefer email and telephone number, but preferably not address.
Then that would suggest we leave it as is and then you have to give written permission in order for it to be there.
I said I didn't mind telephone number.
Oh, okay.
You know what? I would just prefer to leave it as is.
Okay.
And if people want to come to us and say, you know, we really feel it's important to have your phone number on the website, then we can opt in or opt out.
Okay.
Or we can opt in.
There you go. Okay. Okay, so we were up to 1113. So now we're on to board policy 1160, political processes. Any, any comments on this? Okay, and I, I. Okay, and I, I do know that Dr. Noel had some, some comments on these, and these are just on the conference agenda, so we may have some, some further changes. Board policy 1220, and AR 1220, Citizen Advisory Committee. Okay, going once, going twice. Board policy 1240 and administrative regs 1240, volunteer assistance. I actually had a question too. Go ahead, Ms. Melikoff.
Since I read this. This is 1240 AR at the bottom of the first page. Why do I have this? Oh, do we, we, do we actually require our volunteers in, in school, as in parents, to be, to have a tuberculosis test?
Well, it says here, who served less than a school year and whose functions do not require frequent or prolonged, I guess it depends, you know, usually you come in for an hour to help in your kid's class, maybe once a week or once a month.
So that isn't considered frequent or prolonged contact with students?
I don't believe we do in that case, no.
Okay.
I think it's, it's up to the superintendent's discretion. I know that, I, I don't think that there's any school that requires the TB testing for parents.
Yeah, I can, I can imagine.
And I really think that would be a huge chill.
Huge burden, yeah.
Tuberculosis requires prolonged exposure in, in most instances.
It says every four years. Does the rest of the staff, does everybody else?
Oh, yes. We follow through with the rest of the staff.
Every four years, oh, okay.
If it's an employee, then we make sure, personnel goes through the list and updates those lists, sends out notices and says, you have to go in, get tested.
Thank you. I, I don't know why else I checked this.
I, I actually have a question about that, and that is, I know we've had discussions about fingerprinting.
Yes.
And we've never fully concluded those discussions. I know it's a can of worms. I don't know where we're at with it, whether the law requires anything of us.
Because of our discussion, I don't know where we are either. You know, it's one of those things where, where the discussion itself creates confusion.
There you go.
I'll have to find out.
Okay, thank you.
And get that information back to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But what I can say that, sort of, some of the elementary discussion was going, that was going on in terms of, for fingerprinting, because it would impact and be more difficult to implement at the elementary level, is that there are other things besides fingerprinting that are actually, like, driver's license scanners that are more up to date and much more effective than fingerprinting that might happen every few years if you're lucky. But every time you have people come onto a school site now, they have systems where you can scan a driver's license. There, there are other options available besides fingerprinting if we want to move in that direction at all. So that's kind of where elementary parents have left it.
Well, I know we also have volunteers who work, for example, as mentors. They meet students at, at school. It's fully supervised. We have them fingerprinted even as volunteers. Now, if it's an employee, they absolutely are, but I'll find out about other volunteers.
Any other comments?
Small one on the next page, on two of the following page. This is small. Tree planting. Doesn't our, like, DP, the beautification program, don't they do tree planting? Is that, I mean, do they have to get approved for every tree that they plant? Is that the way?
Yes.
Mr. Headshot. They do, we do have a volunteer request form, and the schools have been pretty good about submitting those. For the beautification projects, the tree plantings at Dos Pueblos and San Marcos High School, in conjunction with Gleeda Beautiful, we have approved a complete set of, of, of tree plantings and upgrades that they are slowly working their way through. So, so basically, we've approved a, a general plan.
Excellent. You've got it covered. Thank you.
Okay, now that we've covered trees. Board policy 1250 and administrative regs, visitors and outsiders. Comments?
Yeah, I got another one, I think. Does, let's see, the visitors and outsiders. I wrote in here that we have open houses, and I have to go back and figure out why that was an issue for me. Because I guess that's an, that's not, they're not visitors or outsiders when it's an open house. Is that, it's just something separate?
No, it's when school is not in session, usually.
In session, right.
Oh, okay, so it's not, and same thing with back-to-school night and so forth. Okay, never mind.
Okay, board policy, I'm sorry, board policy 1260, educational foundation.
I did have a, a sort of a question on that one. I'm fine with the way that this is set up, but I want to be sure, this is looking at an educational foundation, and I don't know that we've looked at having any sort of in-house sort of development office yet. I want to be sure that this doesn't preclude us doing fundraising within the district and creating sort of our, our own in-house foundation, if that's a direction that we want to move to in the future.
I don't believe this does.
Well, when and if that time comes, we could always pull up the policy and review it. Board policy 1321 and administrative regs, a solicitation of funds from and by students. Ms. Melikoff?
Yes, no student shall be required to raise a specified amount of money in order to participate in activities sponsored by a school-related organization. Is what, when you play sports, you are, as a parent, parents are asked, is it to donate, or is it, is that amount that they are told to bring in a?
The response to the teacher can be, it is not a requirement, there's no pay-for-play. Teacher absolutely cannot hold a student, student's feet to the fire on that kind of fundraising.
That has also been an issue in some of our academies, where parents or families have been told that they must raise a certain amount of money in order to be in the academy. And I have spoken to a few who have been extremely hard-pressed to do that. So I think we maybe need to make sure that all of our staff are really versed with this policy, to make sure that they aren't putting undue pressure on families that are not in a position to be able to do that.
And I'm actually curious about this as well, because, for example, our elementary schools, they all go to outdoor science camp, outdoor camp. It costs X amount of dollars per kid, and everybody has to do fundraising, and especially at our low-income schools, that's really hard to do. But that's, we can't support that from our district funding. So what is this saying here? But it is a school-sponsored activity.
For those students who do not have the funding, we have other funding sources.
From where? So if a school has a problem, they can come to the district and say?
No.
No, usually it's a PTA, PTO, it's, it's local donations.
It's local donations, but sometimes the local donation couldn't do it as well. So, I mean, really, it, it's, you know, some of our schools.
No child can be, you know, eliminate, not allowed to go because of, yeah.
Because they didn't put the money, okay. How about?
Can, can I just clarify what you just said, Ms. Sowoski? If a student cannot, because I was making a distinction between having to fundraise for a program and having to pay the expenses of a, of a trip or something like that. And so, for example, I, I'm looking at the science camp, I'm thinking, students aren't required to fundraise, they're requiring to pay, and however they can accomplish paying, it may, maybe they can pay out of their own, you know, the families can pay out of their own pocket, or maybe they actually have to fundraise.
Typically.
You just needed to stand up, right?
Right.
So I was thinking there was a distinction, but are you saying that if a student cannot afford the cost of the science camp, the student can, is not, is still permitted to attend?
That's correct.
Okay.
Usually it's, it's termed, the parents give a donation to the activity, and oftentimes it's a certain amount figured out. And then the school can fundraise, the students can fundraise together as a group, PTO, PTAs can do that same thing, but no child is not allowed to go because of lack of funding.
Well, that's, I can just see where it could end up having a chilling effect, where, where schools, like, for example, I know Luccumber goes to Washington DC, they go to Europe. If they're feeling like this is going to be just too hard to fundraise, or we're not going to offer it to anybody, because everybody might not be able to go, and we might not be able to raise the funds for everybody to go, that could end up limiting things, so.
Actually, I don't believe this is different than, I would have to look at the old board policy, but this is the way, as a principal, when I was principal at the middle school, it was always this way. This is not any different than way, the way it's always been, as far as I, unless someone knows something different.
I actually like this. I'm, I'm happy to find out this information, so.
Although, schools that make those trips, they're either school trips or they're not. And if they're not, and even though a teacher might be the person who is the chaperone for the trip, they must conduct all of their affairs off-campus. And how they get their, the word out there, they can't use school communication, they can't use their classroom, et cetera, et cetera. It's come up at a number of, of junior highs that do private trips and not school-sanctioned trips, and they can't be using any kind of school resource to, you know, promote, communicate, et cetera, about the trip.
One of the things that I think should be under the purview of the board is to ask for an accounting of some of these trips when they are school-sponsored, to find out if this policy has been followed, if any students have been precluded from going because they didn't fundraise enough. You know, this is, as Ms. Sowoski said, an old, old policy. Any administrator knows this from Admin 101, but yet, you know, we still see abuses from time to time of this, I think.
May I ask if there's a way, Dr. Sarvis, to include something in the administrative reg that captures what Mr. Zettel just said, that a, you know, teacher, a coach, you know, whatever the capacity happens to be, should be prepared, if asked, to provide an accounting to their administrator or to the district office for examination? Does that?
We can certainly include that. Good.
Okay.
And I might just add, we have had cases where teachers who are conducting trips outside of school have used civic center use permits to schedule those meetings on school campuses, just as we would with any other organization.
Can I ask one more thing about art fees? I mean, I just wrote a check for one of those. Even that is covered under this, okay.
Yes, oh, yes.
Because what's interesting is, I, I don't have a problem with these things, and they, and it's often the child comes home and says, I need such and such, and so you just make a check out and whatever it is. And it never gets, I don't think it ever gets to the parents that it's a donation. It's, it's actually, wouldn't it, does it become a donation as in a charity write-off, a deduction? I don't know. But anyways, I, I feel like we write these things all the time, and I don't think it ever really gets the parent that it's a, it's a donation, which is fine, but it, it isn't fine, but it.
Things like shop fees or art fees, if the student is making something for their own use to take home, then we can charge a fee for that. But if it's part of the instruction, and they need chalk, for example, to do a chalk drawing, as part of the instruction, we can't charge for that. We have to be very careful when we ask for donations in that regard. And the, the issue regarding pay-to-play, that's critical, that we not allow any of that to go on. I mean, that, you know, when coaches say, well, we need a donation for a spirit pack, or we need a donation for transportation this year, or just say no.
They can ask for it, but the kid still participates.
Oh, it has to be very clear that it's a donation, and I'm not even sure about asking for a donation in that regard. How?
I'm very concerned about that, because I know, talk about a chilling effect. That has a tremendous chilling effect on low-income students who perceive that they can't even participate, that they don't even try to participate in those programs, because they think that that is a requirement. And so, because other, they hear, the other kids say, we had to pay this much, or we had to raise this much. And so they self-select out of it because of the perception that it is a requirement. So I think we really need to be careful about how teachers and coaches present that information.
It, it sounds to me like maybe our principals and athletic directors need to get a bit of a refresher on what they can and can't do. And when an art teacher sends a notice home, it needs to be very clear on the notice that they're soliciting a donation, that it's not a fee per student.
Make a, a comment?
Sure.
And that is, is that one of the things that we've been doing for about six years is sending out co-curricular guidelines and posting them on the web, distributing them to, or asking the principals to distribute them to booster groups and such, because all of that information is included in there.
Thank you for the reminder. That's, that applies.
And those are all translated.
It is not, but it will be.
Thank you.
And that one applies to high school only, co-curricular guide?
No, we get it in elementary as well.
Oh, do you? Okay, thank you. Okay. Board policy 1340 and AR 1340, access to district records. Yeah, it is. Yes?
Yeah. We, we voted not too long ago to put records in a storage facility, and we were talking about at that time.
The retrieval fee.
Yes, the retrieval fee, and whether we could charge for that.
No, 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 that wasn't the discussion. The discussion was, what are the total charges going to be for us retrieving documents? Because it was a, it was a per-retrieval fee.
Because we can't charge for time to, for the, going into this.
You can't charge for copies and direct costs, so I would think that you could charge for a part of a retrieval fee.
The, the discussion, or the direction that the board gave me that evening was specifically to address the limitation on, it was actually a control feature. Who can retrieve documents? Is it just going to be something that anybody in the building can do? I had a meeting the very next day with Brian Tangway, who's heading up that project again, and they did pick up some 500 boxes last week. And yes, the retrieval will be very controlled. It won't, it won't just be, anybody will be allowed to do it. It'll have to go through him. His office will set up some type of a procedure. And to minimize those fees, that, that was the whole idea of it.
Right. But the issue is really a legal one. Under the Public Records Act, if a member of the public requests a document and that document is in storage, is it our expense to retrieve the document, or can it be charged to that member of the public asking for the document? And I?
I believe the only payment is for?
The copies.
The copies, yes. So we pay the retrieval fee.
Okay.
Barbara? We can't charge for staff time.
If it's not a public document, and it's something that we require staff time, we do have the ability to charge for that when it is generating.
To create a document, yes.
Yeah, create documents.
This is academic records. I'm assuming a lot of this is about, so if a person comes in and wants their, their report card from high school in, you know, the 1960s, and I assume it's in one of those 500 boxes, can we charge to, to go find it?
Yes, and then we, we charge them a dime for copy.
But we can't charge them to go into the storage room, no.
I, see, I'm, I'm seeing heads go in different directions. I think maybe you need to ask Mr. Price. And it's hard to know from reading this, yeah.
Are you looking on five of six, the bottom part there?
Or six, yeah, six, six of six, yeah.
Oh, six of six, yeah, because the cost, yeah, it talks about the cost of duplicating and the cost of constructing and programming and computer services.
Right, right.
Well, something to look into.
Okay. Board policy 1400, relation, I'm sorry, did I go?
No, I'm on 1400.
Relations between other government agencies and the schools.
I'm always curious why we, I'm, I grew up in other places besides California, obviously, that why schools aren't exclusively used. that why schools aren't exclusively used as polling places. That's just, I guess not.
Exclusively?
I'm always curious that it's not used more, but it's nothing, I guess I, it must be some contract or something.
It, it's simply because we have students in and out of almost all rooms at the school, and it's hard to take a, take a room and say, "There are going to be no other student activities or classes in this room." So if you tried to do that in a cafeteria, for example, well, during.
It doesn't work, yeah.
Part of the day, it's going to be full of students.
And in point of fact, we have fewer and fewer polling places as people make use of absentee ballots.
I guess, I just want to note that in, past four or five of the states I've lived in, they close school on election day.
Oh, my gosh.
And they use the schools.
Don't say that around students.
Okay, board policy 1431, waivers, I'm sorry, community relations waivers, yeah, okay. Comments? Okay. Board policy 1700, relations between private industry and the schools. I actually find this one extremely timely, but other than that comment. No comments? Okay, wow, look at us. So we're done with our initial discussion of board policy series 1000. We have no need to return to consent items. Coming events, I believe, were announced, so we will adjourn this meeting.